...and adoption of agenda. Welcome, everyone. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we will have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. Would anyone care to address the board? And if so, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. And we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Come on, really.
Hi, Stephanie Lohman, 6520 South 116th Street in Franklin, 53132. And I just wanted to make sure that the board was going to speak to the recent findings of law enforcement of the safety survey that has been on the agenda the last few minutes. And if we could get that added to the discussion today. Thanks.
Thank you. We, since we didn't notice it, by law, we cannot discuss it tonight. But you can tell us, when will it be on the discussion?
I can give an update.
When is that? During your report. Under your report, you can talk about that. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to address the board tonight on an agenda item? Anyone else care to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move to committee reports. And we'll start with our, actually, we'll not start with that. We'll start with our policy committee. How about Quinn?
How about it?
What about it?
Well, we've been very busy. And before you, I believe there are four, five approvals. One is a rescind. We combined one with another. We created one. We updated discussion, I guess.
Okay. I see there's a long list of future items on there as well. All right, thank you, Quinn. We would have a personnel update?
Personnel committee met, and we held our final negotiations, hopefully, with the teachers' union, and we'll be discussing that under number six.
Thank you. How about financing facility?
We're meeting next Monday at 6:30.
Thank you. And how about our advisory committee to the board? We have our co-chairs here.
Good evening. My name is Gar Kronhelm. I'm vice chairperson on the Citizens Advisory Committee reviewing the referendum relating to addressing wants and needs of both Hales Corners Elementary and here at the high school. Since the last update, that was given just before our second meeting, we've now completed meetings both here at the high school and at the grade school. So, complete tours were given to expose the committee members to see directly what some of the issues are at both locations. I just might add that there was some very good discussion during those tours amongst committee members. So, there's a lot of good initial ideas and comments, suggestions already coming forth about what we need to do. We also, since the last meeting with the help of one of the committee members, conducted an internal committee survey regarding both locations. We are meeting for our third time tomorrow. We're going to review in detail the results of that survey and use that to kind of define a bit of a path forward. We also intend on, with a committee of roughly about 20 people, splitting ourselves up to some degree so that some can focus more specifically on one project or the other. And again, the results coming off of the survey will help us identify what members have particular interest in one area or the other. The committee will still meet jointly, share ideas and do updates. But with the amount of work and the differences in the two projects and the number of committee members we have, we think it'll be much better to split ourselves up to a degree and focus on the specific projects to come up with solutions to address the needs. So, any questions?
You just can't thank you guys enough. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the superintendent's report.
Hello. All right. There's been quite a bit of positive media coverage lately regarding our high school athletic programs. Just this morning, WTMJ was interviewing Whittles World Champion Powerlifter Lauren Lent and her coach RG Luco. So, congratulations to them. It was a good interview. Now newspapers, Preps Plus, and even the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel have turned their great stories, have turned out great stories about our football team, our girls volleyball team, our girls swim team, who is now ranked second in the state in the coaches poll, and our first-place soccer team. Lots of awesome opportunities for our kids in the Whittles School District. We just finished another very successful and productive staff development day today. The focus today was on using assessment to drive instruction, which, speaking of assessment, which drives instruction, the formal map assessment was just completed, and teachers are waiting results to identify the current areas of strength and need. Awesome opportunities for students continuing. Details have been released regarding the high school's fall performance of Light the Lights, a Broadway review written by our very own Tom Weiskirber. It's jam-packed with music, singing and dancing, and the show is scheduled to run from November 5th through the 8th with a special senior citizen show on November 4th. Basically, Tom was taking highlights from a bunch of different old musicals and rolling them all into one to provide a lot of entertainment. So, it should be really good. And I think our seniors are going to love it as well. The annual meeting and budget hearing were a great success. It's always great to hear about all the positive things that have or happened in our district. Our board president's recap really put all of that into perspective, pointing out the tremendous return on investment we get through our Whittles Community School. And last, well, almost last but not least, we received a tremendous honor along with the request to attend Global Learning Network's second annual convening that brings together 300 leaders from across the United States, Spain and the United Kingdom, whose schools have participated in OECD test for schools. Basically, that's the International PISA test. Our mean scores place Whittles High School near above the top 25 percent of schools in the U.S. And internationally, we're right there with the top-performing European schools, including top-performing Finland and our Canadian neighbors. It's not a surprise that our students do well when you recognize they are nurtured and supported by a great community and are taught by a talented and committed staff. As long as we continue to work together, the sky is the limit for the students of the Whittles Community School District. If you want me to ad lib something on the bus, last week, Thursday, well, early in the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, somewhere in there, I saw the letter from the police chief who said that the area north of Janesville for elementary students was considered hazardous after they did their evaluation. I then talked to Lieutenant Murphy, who followed up. I think I had my conversation with him Thursday or Friday. It had to be before we met with the bus company, so maybe Thursday. And he reiterated that it was elementary kids north of Janesville in that big area on 116th, but it also spreads out to those side streets. And then Doug and I contacted the bus company, had a meeting with the bus chairman, or whatever he is, and the president.
Terminal manager.
How's that? Terminal manager. And asked him to start pulling the maps together for the kids and seeing what it would take to put those routes together for that area of the Hales Corners in Franklin. So, that's where we're at right now. And so, I'm waiting for a lot of information to come in yet before I give a full-blown report to the board. You know, how many buses is that? How many kids is that? I haven't heard of it yet.
I could make one correction. You said north of Janesville, south of Janesville.
South of Janesville, yeah. Good point.
How far east and west did that section entail?
Sorry, what?
If it's south, excuse me, if it's south of Janesville, how far east and how far west? To the district boundaries, east and west? Or to a cross-street, east and west?
Like I said, it's not, we have a lot to look into yet. But I would imagine if they all funnel into 116th, 116th Street, then they'd be affected.
I'm just surprised the police didn't give us an east and west boundary.
Well, Lieutenant Murphy said he's still going to follow up with a more detailed map.
Is there an area that was identified?
Isn't Highway 100 already considered dangerous anyway? So, I would imagine it'd be Highway 100 to 124th.
124th is the county line.
I don't want to speculate and get parents excited, so.
It's not a noticed item, so we can't have too much discussion on it tonight. We're just giving us an update. Yeah. Thank you for that. All right. Next up, we have the third Friday student count. Normally, do you want to give us the update on that?
Sure.
Since Joel is not here, in our board packet, we got the actual count. It looks to me, if I'm reading this right, like it is the largest number of students we've had since 2004 or '05, at least the data that we have here. Do you want to give us?
Yeah. The total head count was 2,515, which compares to 2,447, which is an increase of 68 students, or approximately 12 percent. And then we had the graph that showed that growth. And there's more to come on this after, as, let's see, who filled out that cover sheet? Doug did.
I did.
Sorry.
We won't know the impact of the change until we get the revenue limit and the calculations from the DPI in mid-October. Just remember that whenever you increase your pupil count, it doesn't automatically increase your revenue because they do a three-year average. So, if, you know, if $9,000 was the number, you'd get $3,000 one year, the next year you're up to six, the year after that, you're up to nine. It's actually 11, but I figured it was easier to divide by three with nine.
Doug, is there more you'd like to add, maybe?
No, I think he covered it. I just, my caveat would be, as Will just said, don't get too excited because by the time they do a conversion to get to aid membership and revenue limit membership, the number will be smaller than that. It's still a good sign, don't get me wrong. And I think the benefit of doing the head count report every year tells us how we stack up at each grade level, gives a better, a good picture of what the school conditions would be like with increased enrollment. That's all.
Questions? Nancy?
Can you tell if these 68 students, the increase, are they in district or are they increased because of open enrollment?
Open enrollment would be included in all of these years. This is totally a head count. We have to.
But can you tell how many were in district and how many were because of open enrollment?
I would be able to. I can't right now.
Okay.
I have the report that we filed with the state that'd be on there, but I'll make a note to.
And maybe you could add the trends with that, the last couple of years, as to?
Sure.
Because we have three years' worth of growth here, from what I can see. So, that is good news for our district.
Well, I would think that most of them are open enrollment because you have two grades, a first and, what's the other one? Seventh, that are like 30 kids each. So, I'd be amazed if we had 30 new residents, but could be wrong. Do you know what our capacity is?
Yeah. Good question.
I do not know that. I don't, it's never come up in any of my conversations, I don't think.
Well, if I look at this graph, we're heading in that direction.
Right. Could you find out, too?
Sure.
Put that on, on the follow-up. Any other questions? On the third Friday count? Okay, we'll look forward to follow-up information based on that. Next up, we have new business, first reading of policies. I revised policy 186 advisory committees to the board. Quinn, do you want to talk about any of that? We'll do one at a time.
Okay.
No?
All right. We're going to start with policy 186. As you can see, we took out temporary and added advisory. And then we had, we had a lot of discussion in regards to the second paragraph of the, second sentence of the first paragraph. The board president, with input, shall appoint committee members and appoint a chairperson to head the committee and report periodically to the board. I believe it, in the previous one, it just said, "The board president shall appoint."
With input, do we need to specify from whom, or can we just?
No, we left it vague, and a lot of policy should be left vague for movement.
That's good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, that was my question, too.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, that will come back then for a second reading and then a vote.
Policy 188 is a new policy. We had gotten, John has asked to have participation in meetings via technology, and we had no policy on this. So, Kathy requested some drafts from other areas, and we received them. We worked on it, sent it to the attorneys, used some of what the attorneys suggested, and came up with this. I want to say that this is not a John Jones policy, although it's been, came to our attention because of it, but we have to look at it as a policy moving forward for future. And I think that, I think the key words are in the very first sentence where it says, "The school board's business requires the active and direct attention of all board members." We can't control outside of this room. We can't control what's going on. And I will say that John has, in the usage that we've had, I haven't heard a lot of ruckus or anything going on in the background, but that doesn't mean, and that's why I'm saying this is not the John Jones policy, we have to look forward as to, looking forward, that some other, a member that may have business and may not be able to make the meeting, may think it's completely all right and appropriate to be at a restaurant or a public place or a bar, or whatever it may be. And, you know, that person may think that's appropriate. And so, we go back to that very first word, it's direct attention, where we're in this room, you have our direct attention. Outside, we can't control it. So, that's what's very important to me, and I think as well as Stephanie, who was at the meetings. Also, closed sessions are really not discussed. I mean, they're not for discussion. It's pretty slam dunk that that's not going to happen or ever, ever going to happen, so.
Okay.
So, do we read this policy to the public, or is it just?
It's been available. They can pull it up online and read it. We don't typically read every word, but.
First reading of policies.
Oh, I see.
It does say first reading of policy.
Me, by us. We should have read it coming in.
We have to read it aloud.
Okay. So, I'm sure this is a first crack. Stephanie, before we let everyone else, is there anything you'd like to add before we let everyone else?
No, I think Quinn hit the main point.
Stephanie's on the committee, so.
You know, these policies aren't defined to limit a person. This is something that we're trying to construct for future boards as well as the current one, and still be reactive to what technology may or may not be available, and yet still how we conduct our business. This was our first shot. That's why we have more than one reading, so that we can hash it out and discuss it and revisit if we need to. So, we get to start somewhere, we put a stake in the realm, so.
All right. Comments? John?
I got a couple. So, just to point out a couple of things in this policy, basically, it says that if such an electronic link to the meeting is made available, it should not be construed to permit or authorize the absent board member, board members' remote participation in the meeting, even if such participation would both technologically, be both technological possible and compliant with the open meetings law.
Where are you reading from here? Okay, I got it.
Second paragraph, too.
So, you want to start there with?
Well, I just want to pick a couple of things here and say, so basically, what this is saying is, and with the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, it does permit for public meetings like this by elected officials to meet via teleconference and that kind of stuff. So, that's why I'm sure that is in there, even if technological possible and compliant with opens meeting, open meetings laws. So, to do teleconferencing would be compliant with the openings meetings, open meetings law, I agree. The problem I have is, basically, you're saying that if somebody wants to essentially tell a, attend via teleconference to the meeting, all they could do is listen. That certainly is no participation. So, you say, if, I don't, and you may not call it a John Jones policy, and currently, I'm the only one trying to do this. So, effectively, though, because I'm having to be gone for work more than I ever could have anticipated before I ran for this office, what this basically does is make me choose between work and the board, because it seems that more effort is going in, well, I guarantee there's not more effort going into this than it takes me to participate when I'm gone because I have to make sure that I'm, that I'm available for these meetings, and I go through extra effort to try to make sure that I can move my schedule around to attend the meeting via, via the internet or telephone. But it does seem like there's, the efforts that are going forth here will result in me essentially not being able to participate because it's a rock and a hard place, you know? And the rock is work, and evidently, this is the hard place. So, just a moment, please.
What I'd like to do, keep going. I'm going to let you continue to go forever. I just, in terms of summary, what I'd like to do then is take all of your concerns and then make sure that I try to summarize everyone's comments so we can send it back to committee.
So, let's talk about past, present, future.
So, in the past, there have been at least three board members, I did not get their
names down, but there have been at least three board members in the past told to me by staff members that have been here a lot longer than, than me, that have telephoned into meetings and participated. Currently, I'm the only one who evidently needs to do that as far as, as far as board members go. However, the, if I can, let's see, he's going to have kind of, however, we have had other staff members on the administrative team call in and do a presentation on a meeting from a conference. So, I mean, maybe they're not deliberating anything, they're presenting, but if it, if it matters that you have to be in the room, how far are we going to extend that? Are we going to extend that to, to staff members doing presentations from the road, too, or not? Are we going to look at why people are gone? I don't know. But I'm just concerned as to where this is going because you talk about the future. Well, presently, well, let's go past again. Last week, State Supreme Court Justice N. Patrick Crooks passed away. He had been ill for a while, and he had been doing, participating in discussions, deliberations, and voting from, via remote, via teleconference. This is the Wisconsin State Supreme Court, elected officials are deliberating and voting via teleconference. I doubt he was at a bar either. I know I'm not. But, I mean, if they can do it, where does that put us? I don't know. But you talk about the future. It does seem that more and more things, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands we, I can't recall right now how many hundreds of thousands we spent on technology right now, but how much did we spend four years ago before we started the one-to-one program? I mean, you know, we've, we've redone internet connections and the cabling in the buildings. We've bought a bunch of iPads, more and more MacBooks. I mean, we, we're into this technology thing except for evidently this piece where it says, oh, not here. I'm confused as to, as to where we are actually trying to go in the district. And as far as the future goes, it, I don't see how it wouldn't be even more acceptable in the future. I mean, State Supreme Court justices deliberating and voting. I, I'm confused.
So, you, I just want to clarify. You, are you saying you would like to participate the way we have been, where you've been able to vote and he's been, and you've been counted in as a quorum?
And?
That's what you'd like to see in this policy?
That's what I'd like to see in this policy. And what the, the attorney for the district came back with, where they researched, they brought back three different, they kicked out three different policies from WASB. One was very restrictive, one moderately restrictive, and one was not very restrictive at all to, to pretty much allow this. They wrote two different potential policies, proposed policies for us, and for some reason, we went with the most restrictive policy that says, "Your participation will be limited to listening." Well, you know what? I can, I can go on the internet in a day or two and watch it on YouTube. So, I'm just not sure how that's even participation. I, I don't understand, if what you're after is to try to get participation of board members, that's what I'm trying to do, and this policy prohibits me from doing that because I can't just bail out on it. I don't know about how many of you guys can, but I can't.
All right. Other comments? Kevin?
Okay. I'd agree with some of the things that he said. With regards to the open meeting law, if it says it as it says in that sentence, even if participation is technologically possible and compliant with open meeting law, if it qualifies for all three of those things, I don't see how, it doesn't sound like you're going specifically, well, we're just restricting because we don't want you to participate. That's kind of what it sounds like in there. If there's, if you can be compliant with all those things, I don't see what the difference is. I know what you talked, what you talked about, Quinn was talking about, we don't know what's going on the other side, but it is an open meeting. I mean, the audience doesn't know what we're doing here on our iPads. They could be doing god knows what here. People back there could be doing anything. It doesn't make a difference. I mean, I understand completely the closed session. That's completely unacceptable because exactly that. In closed session, it's just those people in there. Everybody knows what's going on. It's a private discussion. We don't know what's going on the other end. But with open, anybody can hear anything that's happening. And I guess, I'm, I'm completely for the non-participation in closed session. I can't see how that would even be possible with confidentiality and such. But with regards to everything being compliant with open meetings laws and enough notice being given with regards to this, say, 48 hours and not five minutes beforehand, I don't see that there would be much of an issue with participation in open meeting discussion.
Okay. Nancy?
Well, I, I find it sometimes difficult when we have someone on the computer or whatever participating in a meeting. I think in this age of technology, and we do interviews by, via that and, you know, things like that, so I think that it probably should be allowed. My, my one question is, is I think we need to address how many people can do this at one time? Because what if we have a time where we have the board president here and we have six people that can't make it to the meeting and they all want a teleconference in? I don't think that would be acceptable, so I think we would have to put some parameters around that. As far as this policy, I, the second paragraph, I have a question mark on it because I, I don't quite get that one. And the last paragraph, I have no idea what they're trying to say in that last paragraph. So, to me, it seems very legalese, and I don't know what the last paragraph means at all, so.
What did you say? The first one? The second paragraph?
The second paragraph, you know, I just, I think that, you know, just like Kevin was saying, if it's permissible and it's compliant with open meetings laws, then, you know, why wouldn't we allow that participation? My big question on that is how many people could participate that way?
At a time.
And would it be first come, first served? Or, you know, I mean, if we have a couple of people that are out having surgery and a couple of people are at work, you know, how, how would that work?
And I'll add to that as president, having three or four computers up here would be really a lot more difficult to manage. Okay. Any other, John, any other comments on your end?
No.
Otherwise, you would like to see us allow participation? Okay.
I keep thinking back to when we were doing the tours of HCE, and it was like the cellphone commercial, "Can you hear me now?" Because every three seconds, the call was dropping.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be honest, we looked like a bunch of bumbling fools stumbling around trying to reconnect for a cellphone, having to repeat things 30 times. And there's a whole audience of people there trying to do the tour with us, and we're, hello, hello, can you, hello, hello? And it was pretty embarrassing to sit through that. So, I think it's worked great when we've been Skyping lately because it's a direct connection. I think there are times when we have to repeat things into it and back and forth, and then Luanne has to say what you're saying, so it gets cumbersome. But I just, life happens, but we adjust and we adapt. I think there is, I mean, the next step is that our people from the community are going to be able to Skype in and speak at the beginning of the meeting to give their opinion because they like to speak. I mean, do we open the door for that? So, I don't know where it stops. I don't know.
I would like to say the last two times that we've done, we've actually used this three times now, the OVO over the internet, which is sort of like Skype, only better. Eric has set us up with that. And I can hear the entire room clearly, and I imagine over, over the, over the computer speakers, there's, you guys can probably hear me better. I don't know. Obviously, I'm not on this end, but if you can't hear me better, I could bring in a set of computer speakers if you need me to. I mean, you know, PC speakers, external PC speakers, if you need me to, might.
Well, again, it can't be the John Jones thing. We have to be able to do it.
I know. I understand, but we can provide that equipment to hear.
And I was, and I was using that as an example.
Right.
But, I mean, trying to do it through a cellphone, if we're doing, I'm telling you, that, that was, if you were sitting on this end and someone else is on the other end, it was embarrassing for the district and the board as a whole to try to go through that. It's not directed at you.
Right.
But I think going forward, if we have to do that again, I, I would want this in place to say, we can't do that.
I think to some, to some degree, we've worked out some bugs since, since we've had to try to use technology to participate. So, my comments would be, I would, since we've worked out a lot, it's gotten way easier to do it with the way Eric sets up the technology. We're getting plenty of notice nowadays that, you know, that makes it way easier. So, I think, I think the things that should be in the policy, you know, it should be allowed. So- So, for example, in the first paragraph, I think, again, keeping policies more vague is a little bit easier, and you can always create a set of rules in the future if you get into this and need to be more specific. But, you know, my suggestion, like in the first paragraph, is, is that the school board's business does require active and direct attention of all board members, and that conducting, conducting board business via telephone conference, I would take out telephone. I think that one is the most difficult.
Yeah.
And actually, you know, during video conferencing, I would suggest we just stick with that for now, or other, or other, you could leave or other, maybe it'll get better in the future, who knows? Shall be allowed, period. And that's really where this policy, in my opinion, should go. Um, I'm not sure you need, and then I think, um, the other parts, some of this is, is just unnecessary, um...
I have a question.
And so, and then I would suggest we do the at least twenty-four hours notice, forty-eight hours is better, because it's really, that same day is really tough to, to set it up. So, if you can get the forty-eight hours notice ahead of time. I do wanna mention that it does, uh, it does depend to some degree on whoever's running the meeting, on their skills too. It took me a while to learn how to do it all, because when you're running the meeting, you're watching the folks out there and you're keeping an eye on your colleagues here, and so it just takes a while to get used to also keeping an eye on that. Um, I also, so those are just my comments. Um, I think I agree with everyone that closed session is off the table, so that should be spelled out in this policy, let me write that down. And, what else? It sounds to me, I just wanna make clear, it sounds to me like it's legal and there's no precedence yet that says we can't do it.
That's exactly right.
So, as long as it's legal and WSP has not really made it clear that it's not...
No, it's completely legal.
It's legal, then I, you know, I don't see why we shouldn't continue to do that. And, but I think it should be spelled out, it, it should be with exception, you know, that it should be rare, in cases where you have to. So, that we're not sending a message in our policy that says, "Oh, if you don't wanna come, you don't have to, you can stay home and call in." That's not the intent. The intent is in an emergency situation.
I don't know about, well, I don't know if you'd call it, how much I'm gone, for example, an emergency to you guys, but to me, if it's...
I wouldn't call that emergency, you did not expect the job to be that way or you wouldn't have run.
Exactly right.
That's a different situation than, um, you just staying at home and...
I would say we don't want it as routine, I don't know how you define that, or as convenience, certainly not out of convenience.
Right, I get that, yeah, so...
Who makes that decision?
Other comments, yeah. Who, um, that's a good point. The board president has the ability to say no? Is that what you wanna say in here? Or the chair of the meeting?
Well, there are examples, there are examples where it's allowed and then you would have to make, you, you, there are example policies where it's allowed and then you would have to take a vote if, if, uh, you felt that it shouldn't be allowed for that meeting or something, and then...
No, that could be...
But I think that gets, I think that gets really a quagmire. I mean, you, the administrators in the room, have any of you run across these policies before in any districts that you've worked in? Not Doug?
I, go ahead.
Um, in, um, when I was in Beloit, and I double-checked their, uh, policy, they allowed it for the past, at least the last decade, because we had, I think, uh, she was the board president, I don't know if she was at the time, but, um, she'd be called up to do training under active orders, and so they would actually do a caricature of her in her seat and do it by phone, but she was allowed to participate, listen, and vote. Um, and it's in the policy, that, and it's just a one-line policy that says, if, um, it, they talked about active duty, family emergency, um, health issues, you know, so if you had hip replacement or something and you couldn't get in here, but you really wanted to participate, you still could.
Okay, so that's a question on the table. Um, back to Quinn's point, I don't think, actually, I don't like the word emergency either, 'cause that is, then it starts to get unclear. Whereas if you just say it's allowed, we allow it. Now, should the committee look at, "We allow it for this, this, and this, and this," as you just suggested, or do we wanna just keep it vague? And I'm trying to get your thoughts so we can send it back to committee for rework. What are your thoughts on that?
The thing about vague is it gives you enough wiggle room, but, I mean, we do that, there's that kinda thing throughout our policies and, and a lot of laws. It gives you wiggle room for judgment, but then it, it can also provide too much, obviously.
Okay.
Say, I'd rather not get too specific, because then it's gonna come up or something's borderline.
And it's missed.
Someone's either gonna make an exception or not, someone might be mad because the exception wasn't made, then you've made the exception, then it turns into a slippery slope of, "Well, now it's not this," and you have to go back and revise the whole thing again.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, let me try to summarize what I'm hearing already, is that there's pretty much some pretty broad support here for allowing it, that we have to give at least a two-day notice, two-business day notice would be preferred, that we might keep it more vague, we're just gonna say that it is allowed, that we're not sure about paragraph, take a look at paragraph two and paragraph, the last paragraph, correct? 'Cause we're not sure about that. I also felt that the second to last paragraph didn't need to be in there at all. Or if you say, no, no, I'm sorry, that, but I, you could stop at the end of the word "meeting" and scr-, and not have all those exceptions. Whenever it's closed session, it's not allowed. That's my, was just my suggestion on that paragraph, but again, you know. So, it would say, "The privilege shall extend only to open sessions of regular and special board meetings and shall not extend to closed session portions of any meeting," period. No, yeah, right. I don't know, I don't know why you would need all the rest of that language, but maybe for legal reasons you do. So, is that, is that what we want, and, and we're gonna stick with maybe working more for video or other technology? Is that okay with everyone? We don't try to do phone conferences, those are really much harder to...
A phone would be other technology.
It could be.
Yeah.
There are phones that, that work better, for example, calling into a landline, especially from a landline to a landline.
Write that down.
And I, and I talked about, um, the spider phone thing before, which is less than three-hundred dollars, which...
Well, then we can leave telephone, video, or other.
I would emphasize some type of landline, 'cause as, I don't want what Jonathan was describing happening with a cellphone.
Right.
I don't wanna have to worry about someone keep calling back in and stuff.
Yeah, but the truth is, I've used a cellphone here and didn't have that problem.
Yeah, but still, you don't know where the other person's gonna be.
That's the same with a landline, though.
Okay.
No, that your calls don't get dropped with a landline. Calls get dropped with a cellphone.
Yeah, but the other person might be calling in with it. You mean, they have to have a landline to call in?
I would say landline to landline. I mean, we could set up a telephone right there, they need to be on a landline, because then it's not gonna drop.
That may get expensive for some of the places I go, I'm just pointing that out.
That's true, but, 'cause I don't...
Jonathan?
No, I think we're, I think we're...
I...
We should just move it along, have it go back to the committee.
Committee?
See what they come back with, see what is precedent in the state for that and proceed with their.
And address how many, talk about how many can call in at the same time?
Well, but then you're getting into the con, in a situation where you're deciding, "Okay, you can stay and you can't."
Yeah.
And I don't know how I would, as chair of the committee, I have no idea how I would decide that.
What's the capability of our technology that, can we, can we have multiple people calling?
On one computer? I bet we could. That would be great.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I, if you don't address the how many, I'm fine with that, because I think it's, we're all elected officials and for the most part, I'm not thinking we don't wanna be here. It's when you have to work and you're called away, but that happens, so I'm comfortable with not worrying so much about how many.
Okay.
I think that's it. All right, thank you all very much. So, we'll go back to committee and come back again for a first meeting. Thank you.
Policy two-two-five, evaluation of the superintendent. This is to update our calendar of events, and that, um, there may be more than my annual evaluations, gives that option. And, yeah, and, and more follows the timeline that we have been using.
Yeah, it's my experience that we have not ever done an evaluation in April or May. We're not through the school year yet, they generally happen in June or July. So, that's why we're just recommending these minor, minor changes. And we do have posted, um, under the boards section, the annual agenda. So, the policies now will align with our annual agenda, our annual, I don't know if you call it calendar, agenda, for when, when we routinely do, uh, these kinds of activities. Sorry, okay. Any other questions or comments on that, before it comes back? Otherwise, that'll come back as is, okay?
The next one in here is two-two-five R., and I don't believe we need to do this. It's a procedure.
Correct. But does anyone have any comments, given it's R. procedures? It really was just aligning that.
Basically, it's just changing the dates to align with the policy.
Right, to align with the policy, so everything looks good there, okay? Annual, now, this one, Quinn, you go over this one then.
Okay. Annual operating budget.
Revised policy six-twenty.
Here again, I think it is, uh, was our intent to get it more with the timeline and to what's really going on, um, with the, with the budget and how it is, uh, put together.
And, anyone have any comments on that? And WASB had recommended we combine six-twenty and we will rescind six-twenty-one, correct?
Yeah.
And so highlighted in red, are, is the language pulled from six-twenty-one that went into six-twenty, to make this a simpler...
'Cause they were, they weren't conflicting, but they were not, um, they were just, it was...
Redundant.
Yeah.
Okay, questions or comments on policy six-twenty? Seeing none, then that will come back and then we will res, also bring six-twenty-one back to rescind that. Okay, under old business, we have discuss and take possible action on contract settlement with WAFT. In your packet, you have the definition. Uh, Nancy, was there anything else or the whole that you wanted to comment on for this?
No, we, I mean, we, um, had talked about as a board about raising the starting salaries of the teachers, and so that was kind of our goal for, for this year, that we wanted to raise the starting salaries for the teachers, for new teachers to be of forty thousand as a minimum, and so, um, in doing that, we had to, um, change a couple other levels that were close to that, those who, who had one or two years of experience. So, that's outlined on the, um, on the, uh, information that's in your board packet. And, um, so, um, after we deducted that money from the one-point-six-two percent for the overall teacher's, um, pot of money, um, and then that left another pot of money, which we divided then among the teachers, and then, um, so that came out to be a one-point-zero-six-seven percent, um, increase on their base salary.
Okay, questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So, vote.
They're moved and seconded, any other discussion?
Just to note that, that this is already considered in the budget that we approved, that we planned ahead and considered this, but as Doug reminds me, because staff is fluid, what our budget may not be what we actually end up at the end of the year, just because of differences of incoming and outgoing and the timing of incoming and outgoing. So, in, the general idea was planned for, but the exact amount might end up being a little bit different than what was in the budget.
Right, we had to do it at a point in time.
Right, so those updates will come to the budget as we review it, and the final figure, of course, at the end of the year, so...
All right, thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Uh, next, we have comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration. Yes?
Regarding the early retirement, can we, um, can we view the procedure that's in place for how we handle early retirements? What's the first stop date, you know, when the application is due, what the application looks like, on through the whole process? The type of letter we send them to say, "Yes, you've been accepted, this is what's expected", and the timeline laid out for that? Can we see the procedure and then the documents that are reflected in that procedure? So, we know going forward, okay, in this state, applications are due, on this date, we need this, and this, when this happens, we'll send you this letter, on this date, this will happen, whatever it is and the amounts that correspond to that, so that we have everything in a fluid system. So, if we do it this year, we, we know what's going to happen at a certain time, so it's not this back and forth, okay, somebody got something, someone didn't, just a fluid process across the board. So, can we look at that and see what's in place right now and make sure it's consistent for everyone going across the board, please?
No problem. It's a good request.
And maybe we could tie that with our request to get a report on the actual cost, right, versus, uh, early retirement? Versus, you know, the, how much did the district save as a result of that? So, maybe you could tie that in? Okay. Next up, are any other items for the future? Nancy?
I would like to know, um, as a percentage of each of the high school classes, what percentage of kids in each class are taking AP, um, classes? I know we've added quite a few classes over the last, um, couple of years, so I'd like to know how many students are participating in those, and then maybe if we can compare it to maybe like last year?
And I would, I would ask that we go beyond just AP, but also these, uh, college, college extension-type classes that, that, uh, Dr. Tony back there set up, and all that stuff. I mean, I, I think the whole, I'd like to get a look at the whole thing.
All right, any other items? Seeing none, then we, I would, uh, board member announcements?
I have two. This Thursday, the boys' soccer team has their conference championship game, so it's at six-thirty at Falcon Field, so if you're in the area, please come down. And then, last Saturday, the marching band took third place in their division at the Cudahy competition, so congratulations. And this Saturday, they perform in state.
Super.
Tickets are available for the drama production. Please, coming up, come see what the kids are doing.
Once again, for the football game, we still didn't have the board up, even though it's my understanding that just one square, foot by foot, doesn't work on there. Something different? Okay, no, that's what I got last time, something different, then never mind. And then, um, just in case there was questions with regards to, uh, my participation in personnel committee and such, I don't have any relatives in the district, although it appears that we do have a fourth grade teacher with the same last name as me. As far as I know, I'm not related to her, so, just like to throw that out there in case people were wondering.
Okay, thank you. I have one. We have, uh, a, an Eagle Scout candidate working to get his Eagle and he, Eagle Award. His name is Bobby Chase, and he is, um, looking to raise money to create, uh, a sign for the Hales Corners Fire Department. So, I have a letter here from, you know, requesting funds if anyone would like to assist in his project. So, it's great to see our students working at, at that level. So, is he here? Bobby? No, he's not here. Okay, Bobby Chase. It says, "The total cost of the project is nearing twenty-five thousand, which is a lot to try to raise, but I believe I can do it."
It's a digital sign that would be solar-powered, to put out and have announcements on the fire station, and I'm pretty sure that it's looking to be...
Some of you are talking about the Hales Corners Fire Department? Hales Corners Fire Department, I thought I read that. Hales Corners Fire Department, checks should be made out to Bobby Chase Eagle Project, and I have the address up here, if you wanna email him, it's rhchase16@whittenall.com. So, congratulations to Bobby, it'll be nice to see this project come together. Um, I'd also like to announce that WASP has two events coming up. October twentieth is our regional meeting, and we will be electing a new director for this, our district, so please let Kathy know, um, if you can attend that. Also, November seventh in Stevens Point, we have our legislative council, again, let Kathy know, and let me, let, yeah, she can maybe get back to us.
Can I have that October date one more time?
Um, October twentieth?
Thank you.
And it's in Peewaqui, so let me know if you're going, maybe we can carpool.
Next Tuesday.
Uh, November seventh. And I wanna also thank Renee for filling in for Kathy Kloss tonight, so, hopefully we didn't, weren't too tough to follow tonight, so, thank you, Renee. All right, any other announcements?
Do you have a date for the annual convention downtown? Do you have a date for the annual convention downtown?
Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that. I don't.
January.
It's in January. But I did want to know if you could all check your calendars for the November 2nd, it's a Monday night, to do our annual board review. So again, I'll have Kathy send an email around, unless someone can't make that right away, let me know. Otherwise, we'd like to do our annual board review. And at the district, at the regional meeting, they hand out, again, they'll be giving us that free survey we can take, so they'll give us our codes. So it'll be kind of a quick turnaround, but I'll get those codes out to you right away, and then we can have some data, two years in a row, on our own performance, and do